You click the button at the bottom of your Zoom screen and choose the Spanish option to hear the forum in that language.
Antes de comenzar, quiero invitar a los miembros de nuestra comunidad hispanohablante a hacer clic en el botón en la parte inferior de la pantalla que viene acompañado de un globo y elegir la opción español para escuchar el foro en este idioma. Si están usando un teléfono, pueden ir a los tres puntos suspensivos y verán lo mismo.
Great. Now we're just going to wait for one second while our translator gets over to that channel.
Mandar a la traductora a ese canal, un segundito.
Give me a second, sorry. No problem. There we are. Okay. Welcome everyone to the Boulder County Commissioner District Two Candidate Forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Boulder County. My name is Elizabeth Crowe and I'm a proud member of the League and very pleased to serve as a moderator for tonight's forum. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. For 100 years, we have encouraged informed and active participation in government and influenced public policy through education and advocacy. To remain nonpartisan, League never supports or opposes political candidates or parties. Our candidate forums are typically held in person with the moderator candidates, volunteers, and audience members all in one place. But to observe public health best practices, we're participating online. For this, we are so pleased to have the partnership of Longmont Public Media and our Spanish-language interpreter, Rosa Bell Rice. According to FCC policy, candidate forums must be broadcast in their entirety except by media reporting on events. Candidates or their staff are asked not to record this forum. The Board of Commissioners consists of three individuals elected to serve four-year terms as leaders of the Boulder County Government. All three commissioners are elected at large by the voters of Boulder County but represent three districts. For the June 30 primary election, Democratic registered voters in Boulder County will choose from one of two Democratic primary candidates to represent District Two. Republican registered voters will have one primary candidate for District Two. Unaffiliated voters will decide which party ballot to fill out, only one, and vote accordingly. The winner of these races will represent their respective parties and run against each other in the November election for the position of District Two County Commissioner. The format for tonight's forum will be as follows. Each candidate will have one minute for an opening statement. We will then begin with questions which have been submitted electronically online to the League or by League members. Questions have been reviewed by our League of Women Voters volunteer screeners and will be addressed to all candidates rather than directing a question to a particular candidate. We will try to ask the candidates as many questions as time permits. Each candidate will have up to one minute or 90 seconds to answer the question. As the moderator, I will announce the time allowed to answer the questions. Tonight's forum participants include, in ballot order by Democrat, then Republican candidates, Jonathan Singer, Democratic candidate, Marta Lochemine, Democratic candidate, and James T. Crowder, Republican candidate. And now for opening statements. We'll start with candidate Singer and you have one minute for your statement. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Elizabeth, for letting us join you in your living room. And I'm surprised we could fit all of us in there, but this is an amazing time for democracy to be happening. I know this has been a tough and challenging time for so many people, and so I also want to thank Longmont Public Media and everyone else who's taken the time out of their day to listen to the choices that you'll have on June 30. I'm a social worker first. I served on the front lines in Boulder County doing child protection services, adult protection services, and after standing up for people in need, I started to realize it was time to flip the script. And so I ran for office where I ran for office to take on big oil and gas, the NRA, and make sure our human services system worked for the people that need it the most. Boulder County's biggest part of their budget is our human services system, and that's why I'm running, to make sure that we can continue to stand up to the special interests and do the right thing for the people that need it the most. I'm Jonathan Singer and I truly appreciate your vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Candidate Lochemine.
Hi, everybody. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for bringing us together and putting this together along with other organizations. And of course, gracias a nuestra traductora que está aquí con nosotros, interprete. Muchas gracias y buenas tardes. Gracias por escucharnos y poner atención. So I have spent 28 years in and around Boulder County fighting injustice, fighting inequities, and that's been in housing, it's been banking, finance, education, climate justice, and it's been in community engagement. And my work has been local, and I appreciate everybody participating in this forum because since November 2018, when I started running for this race, it was actually the exact same reason then that it is now about serving community locally. Longmont in our district is personal, and a third of Longmont as a city looks like me, walks life like me, and is perceived like me. And my same response to why I'm running is to serve and to create more impact. So thank you for participating.
Thank you. And candidate Crowder.
You're unmuted here. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for making this forum possible. My name is Jim Crowder. You'll see me on the ballot as James Crowder. And I am not a politician. I'm a businessman. I've been in Boulder and for more than 40 years, run a small business. Raised family here, have a son and his family live in area with our two grandkids. I'm interested in the well-being of the folks that live in Boulder County. I'm concerned with the covenant or some of the promises that Boulder County has made to the people that live here. In particular, I think the county has probably breached their promise to maintain the roads in the county. There was, you know, quite a kerfuffle about that a few years ago, but I still don't think it's resolved. I'm sorry, I saw finger to my out of time.
That means you have 10 more seconds.
Oh, 10 more seconds, okay. Well, the rest of it is, I'm more, I'm, I am more concerned with good governance, inexpensive government, and making sure that the first priority of our county is to make sure that we are safe and we have good roads that we can, that we can drive on.
Thank you so much. So now we'll go to the questions. Each candidate will have one minute to respond unless we want to extend the time a little bit, but I'll announce that at the beginning of each question. Please watch for my hand signs at the 30-second mark, which would be two fingers, the 10-second mark, and stop. If you are mid-sentence when your time is up, please just promptly finish that sentence so we can move on to the next candidate. For the first question, we will start with candidate Lochemine. And the question is, how do you define public participation? And how would you manage it as commissioner? And you'll have one minute to answer this question.
So watching the minutes is going to be tricky, I could tell already. Public participation, for me, the work that I've been involved in, in every institution or agency that I've worked with, from a board perspective, both nationally and locally, it's about really building trust. And we'll talk about, I'm sure, some of my flood recovery at another point, but that's really what we're lacking right now, from community to local government. And that means opening more doors for conversation, being in more places. And as a commissioner, my commitment that I've been talking about to community members is that my door will be open. The interpretation tonight is an example of language access, but is another piece that's really important in public participation. But just letting people, everyday people like myself, participate in this process as a representative leadership is another way to help bring people into our local government processes, programming, and the procedures that we follow.
Thank you. Candidate Crowder, you have one minute.
Well, I'm big on public participation. And for me, it means that I'm in, if I'm elected county commissioner, I'm in a role to listen to what my constituents have to say. I believe that information should flow from the constituency to the person in the position to make policy decisions. I don't go into this position, if I'm elected, to impose my will on the county or the people that live in the county. I'm here to listen. I'm here to try to affect these wishes to the extent that's possible.
Thank you. And candidate Singer.
Thank you for the question. I think that is arguably the most important question we'll get all day because public participation doesn't just mean that you're heard, but action is taken. And I want to say that as a lawmaker, the reason that I ran was because there were too many people left behind. And so the bills that I've run at the state legislature have brought children in foster care to the Capitol to change policy meaningfully. It was to bring undocumented immigrants to the seat of power and let truth speak to power and actually create programs that stood up to Donald Trump. And as I'm a county commissioner, it'll be time to take our meetings out of Pearl Street and bring them across the entire county, Netherland, Longmont, Jamestown, you name it. And I look forward to finding a way to do that with all of you.
Thank you so much. For the next question, we'll start with candidate Crowder. And it is, how have county revenues been affected by the coronavirus? And what would you do to address economic and health impacts of COVID-19? And you have one minute for this question as well. Oh, you'll need to click your unmute button first. Try it one more time.
There we go.
There we go.
Big question. Sorry for the delay. COVID-19 is certainly an unprecedented challenge, and the biggest impact on the county is going to be in their sales tax revenue. Property taxes continue to go up every year, so the county is the beneficiary of rising property values. Of course, there are some limitations on that in the Gallagher and Taber amendments, but still, the county's got a budget for 2020, I think, $403 million. That's a lot of money. And even if the revenue slips a little bit, I think we'll be able to change priorities and live within our budget.
Thank you. Candidate Singer.
You know, I'm not going to repeat anything that was said, but our county budget has taken a huge hit, and what we need to do is get very creative. We need to use our bully pulpit to talk to the state and the federal government to make sure that the money that is there to provide for the critical services actually work. And the second thing that we need to do in the era of COVID-19 is think outside the box. I want to create a Boulder County Green New Deal where we can invest in jobs and in renewable energy and still protect our open spaces and find new ways for farmers to grow food. And last but not least, let's decarcerate our jails and save some money that way and provide for the services that we truly need.
Thank you. And candidate Lochemine.
Yeah, so how's our county revenue being affected? James talked about that a little bit already, and it's true. We've got, what people may not understand, because I'm in the residential housing market, and our property values are continuing to go up. But the piece of what happens with our commercial property taxes is where we get then tangled up with Gallagher and some of those limitations. And we need to be aware and start planning and doing preparation in regards to how we're going to overcome those pieces. Your question was really both about economic and also health and those pieces. We have a lot of resources in Boulder County. And part of the question, one of the first housing resources town halls that I hosted in April was bringing together city and county and community folks, landlords and tenants to really talk about what services do we have here and make sure that our residents know about the safety net that we already can offer because there's funding there to provide, and that's one of the pieces that we're going to have to broaden.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with candidate Singer, and let's do a minute for this one as well. It is, please share your perspectives on fracking. And what did you do about this issue before and since running for commissioner?
You know, the environmental movement has been something that I've been a part of my entire life. I started out actually working to protect our open spaces in other states, in North Carolina, where they were about to slash their farmland and wetland protection budget. And here in Boulder County, I'm actually part of the lawsuit to reinstate the fracking ban here in Longmont. We passed Senate Bill 181 last year. It guarantees local control. Now it's time to test that and put, and not let up. Oil and gas is just one component of this, but looking to the future, this is why I do talk about making sure that we do have a Green New Deal for our county. We can protect our open spaces, protect our people, and put in real fines for polluters and put that money right back into those communities that are hardest hit.
Thank you. And candidate Lochemine.
So the question you're asking is about perspectives on fracking, and I think there's two pieces there. One, I have always been an environmentalist as a young person, and then really started learning about the connections and the intersectionality around social justice and people who are most affected by our climate disasters, by the climate crisis that we're in, which was part of what I worked on specifically in flood recovery. That's all connected to our budget when we look at the Office of Emergency Management, our planning, our preparation. The fracking piece specifically for me, I'm a single parent, I'm a previous teacher in St. Brain, and so this fight against oil and gas development to protect our land and our water and our resources is part of my commitment to Boulder County voters and Boulder County residents in general, to find a path to ban fracking for us from a county level. And so my previous work has been in that realm, and it will continue as a commitment to voters.
Thank you. And candidate Crowder.
Well, I don't walk down the same path as my challengers here. I am yet to be convinced that there are such dire dangers that are caused by fracking. And in fact, I know that there's a lot of revenue generated that flows into the county culprits, and some counties, in fact, the excise revenue. So here, once again, we're trying to stop a completely legitimate business and drive that business out of our county over, I think, an ideological pursuit.
Thank you. So now we'll go to candidate Lochemine for the next question. And we're going from environmental health issues around fracking to other health issues regarding food insecurity. The question is this, estimates are that one in seven Boulder County residents struggle with food insecurity, a problem that is worse given the pandemic. What will you do to address this hunger crisis in the near term and in the long term? And we'll do a minute for that one as well.
Okay, yeah, that's a, that's an important question, like you noted, not just, I mean, it's more obvious and we're seeing more about it right now during COVID, but we have a couple different pieces in Boulder County. One, I serve on the Board of Directors for Longmont United Hospital Center of Health, and that, we follow the Colorado, the community needs health assessments, excuse me. And so one of our focuses specifically this year has been around food access. How do we use facilities, infrastructure, meaning buildings, to create space, to create partnerships, and do collaborations, which is something I have a lot of experience around? So an example in Longmont, how do we bring Olin Farms in or another community farm in to give other options at food banks where we know we have food deserts in Boulder County? That's something that I've already been working on and will continue. The other piece is the bigger question around ag, and how do we create a demand when we know that only 2% of our local food is grown here in Boulder County? COVID should be the alarming bell of, if we really were to get cut off, how would we commit to feed each other in a healthy way?
Thank you. Candidate Crowder.
Well, it pains me to encounter people that go hungry at night, be they children or seniors. Part of the role of government is to ensure that these challenges are ameliorated in some way, but that's also the role of private enterprises, food banks, and so forth. And even school districts have participated in lightening this, the pain of hunger around the county. I'm not sure it is the only or exclusive role of government to deal with this issue, however, I think that I would invite churches and other not-for-profit organizations to participate in getting food distributed to folks that need it.
Thank you. And candidate Singer.
I'm so glad this question got brought up because Boulder County, I believe, has seen a 4% increase in food insecurity since the beginning of COVID-19. It's the worst increase, highest increase, in the 10 biggest counties in our state, and it's our human service departments that are the biggest part of the county budget right now. 24% of the budget is there. So I worked on a bill this year to ensure that more people could get access to food by making sure that if you have a program violation somewhere else in your, in public assistance, you don't lose your food stamps or food assistance. The other thing that we can do is, and I'll say I'm proud to be supported by people like Mark Gutridge, who farms at Olin Farms, is we can continue to incentivize our local food service growers to grow sustainable foods that sequester our carbon and feed our communities. And then last but not least, we can start to build relationships with our nonprofit communities to make sure it goes out to the communities that need it first, best.
Thank you. For the next question, we will start with candidate Crowder. And let's do up to 90 seconds for this one. The question is, what action would you take to address the racial disparities in our community?
Well, thanks for that question. First of all, it begins with me, and I continue to encourage people who see some failure on my part to understand that we're all equal. In fact, it's my own personal spiritual belief that we're all the same thing. In terms of policies at the public, and public policies in government, you know, we've made good strides there in terms of diversity training and trying to hire on a more equal basis. I would continue those policies, certainly. In terms of speaking out and encouraging people to kind of check their thoughts, you know, check their, check their speech, even in, even in jest, sometimes things hurt. And, you know, I've been on the planet long enough to see a lot of changes in our country and in our cultures, and I think the time has truly come to do what we can to just see each other as human beings.
Thank you. Candidate Singer, same question for you.
Absolutely. I'm so, I'm so glad this question was brought up. You know, the first step is recognizing that I'm the recipient of white privilege. I was born into that, and recognizing that, the question is, what do I do with that privilege? So when it comes to Boulder County, it means taking a look at our best county workers and attracting a new and diverse workforce through economic incentives. It means standing up to our law enforcement system by making sure that we all have body cams for our frontline officers and getting real citizen input and accountability when officers do something wrong. And it also means standing up for people that maybe didn't have a voice before. And so when our friend Ingrid was living in Sanctuary here in Boulder, I was beating the drum every day to make sure that our governor would issue her a pardon so she would be one day reunited with her family. It's time that we use that privilege in the right ways, and I've been standing up every day in the best way possible, and we have a lot to learn, I have a lot to learn, and we need to hold each other accountable as humans and as elected officials. And so I know there's a really tough situation going on, and my town, my town just to the north of me, Lyons, right now with their fire chief. He said some racist comments. I asked for accountability, and he resigned. My hope is that the conversation doesn't end there and that we continue to build and grow even through these uncomfortable conversations.
Thank you. And same question to you, candidate Lochemine.
Thank you. So the question around racial disparities, the question around racial inequities is really weighing heavy on my heart right now, from a personal standpoint, from the lens of being an immigrant in this country. I already talked about the way that people who look like me and walk like me are perceived. And there's work that I've been involved in, in a lot of different areas, that's had to do with changing HR policies. It's been talking about policy changes, creating professional development, building curriculum for Spanish-speaking students, or teachers in our school district who are trying to connect with parents and families that don't speak the same language. I have spent my life lobbying and advocating for first-time homebuyers. 90% of my clients over the last 20 years are monolingual Spanish-speaking families who otherwise wouldn't get resourced. But I think one of the examples of where I'm going and what I've been doing as an advocate, most recently, was working for Community Foundation Boulder County as the facilitator of a national cohort, doing work around cultural brokering in our community. And through that work, doing interviews, listening to, and working alongside community members as I have for many, many years, we realized that we had a disconnect here in Boulder County around our HR policies. We were able, through the advocating for cultural brokers, to ask our Boulder County commissioners to eliminate bachelor degrees for 81 of our positions. That creates economic opportunity and addresses racial disparities in an institutionalized way. That creates economic opportunity and addresses racial disparities in an institutionalized way.
Thank you. The next question will start with candidate Singer. And it is shifting to the election process and the structure for the county commissioners. The question is, what is your position on increasing the number of commissioners from three to five? That is, three districts and two at-large seat candidates or representatives? And what is the reason for your position? And why don't we do one minute for this question?
All right. Well, first of all, I think, I just want to go out there and say this already that I don't have a problem with putting this on the ballot and letting the voters decide. And I think that the county commissioner should do that. Because this is about democracy, and people should have a choice, and we need to put that on the ballot. Whether it's three or three by district and two at-large, or what that looks like, what we need to do is work out a situation where we're not gerrymandering districts. And so regardless of whether we have three or five, we need a fair redistricting process that makes sure that we aren't excluding certain communities. And we're making sure that whether it's in our African-American community, our Latino and Latina community, or even just geographically, our unincorporated and incorporated areas that we're keeping communities that are together, together.
Thank you. And candidate Lochemine?
I have a question of three to five commissioners. I supported that initiative and signed that petition last year. And part of my reasoning was because, and it was affirmed after, you know, since November 2018, out talking with people, meeting new groups of folks, being in different areas around environmental work and, and faith organizations and the census work, et cetera. The resounding conversation that I continue to hear, besides what does a county commissioner do, which is a really critical question for our voters, was, I don't feel like I'm being heard. And that, to me, seems like the outcome from talking with folks who are carrying that three-to-five commissioner petition that more people want to be part of. We talked, we started with public participation. And so if that is one way to get to that outcome, I completely support it. And at the same time, the outcome of just having different representation starts with my election as being the first person of color in Boulder County on this commission.
And candidate Crowder?
Honestly, I'm a little bit of two minds about this issue. I do believe that having direct representation, in other words, having a county commissioner that represents a particular precinct, and I changed the name from district to precinct, is a good idea. Adding two more county commissioners with the salaries they carry, I think, is a bad idea, however. It's an additional expense to the taxpayers in the community. And really, it still sets up to be pretty much a one-party government because you have the two at-large representatives. And given the demographics in Boulder County, that's right now probably going to be Democrats.
Thank you all for that. The next question will start with candidate Lochemine. And it is, let's do, let's do 90 seconds for this one. Maybe lots of different pieces to your answer. The question is, what are your short-term and long-term goals in addressing climate change in Boulder County? And what potential obstacles do you foresee?
I feel like that might be more than 90 seconds, but thanks for the small extension. So short and long-term goals around climate action, as some folks have heard, and I'd encourage you to look at my website and some of the information on my LinkedIn, et cetera, about work that I have been involved in. And one of those specifically was in direct effect of our climate crisis in the flood of 2013 and that data assessment. We know that we will have more natural disasters. I work with the Office of Emergency Management and Planning that's connected to the budget with our wildfire, wildfire management, mitigation, and those different pieces. Climate action is huge. Our Mother Earth, we call it Pachamama, has been very clear, and it's not just new. It's been happening since I was a young person, working in those issues. And climate action, short-term, long-term, it's one, getting more people involved and really opening this conversation around ecojustice. Because again, those of us who are most affected historically, and certainly in our county and in our state, need to be part of the conversation for planning processes, programming around climate action in the future. And I also, you know, we've got all these opportunities around carbon sequestration, regenerative soil health, all these different ways that we can build up. And we also need to let everyday people participate because it feels so high-level. That's part of our job locally in Boulder County with our employees is what can we be doing day-to-day as an alternative to just buying EV car or solo panels? We need to bring them together and support that conversation on climate action.
Thank you. And candidate Crowder?
Well, I'm not so vain to think that I can have much influence on the climate in Boulder County. In fact, I think there's probably a lot of science that's still out on that particular topic, but it is a juicy political topic. And I'm more focused on doing things right here in Boulder that will make life better with the people that live here and pay taxes. I'd like to keep their roads up to date, do what I can to make sure the schools are full of good teachers, and that we're not overburdened and priced out of our homes by rising taxes.
Thank you. And candidate Singer?
Thank you for the question. And the clock is ticking. We are in a climate emergency. We do not have time to hesitate. We need to act decisively and quickly to move to 100% renewable energy as fast as possible. I'd like to see it done in the next 10 years. I'd like to make sure that we are doing in the short term what we can. And this starts with things as simple as looking at affordable housing and putting affordable housing on mass transit conduits, finishing fast tracks so people get out of their cars and are able to use mass transit. It means that we hold polluters accountable through new fines and put that money straight back into those frontline communities that were hit hardest by that. And it also means making sure that our farmers are supported when they try to use regenerative agricultural processes that seem like a risk but are actually better and more sustainable in the long term. We need to get ourselves off of artificial pesticides that are poisoning our waters. And last but not least, I think that the number one thing that we can really do is make sure that we serve as a beacon and an example for the rest of the state and the nation to show that this can be done, and it means better jobs, more sustainable jobs, and a stronger community in the long run. And I believe that my support from groups like Sierra Club and 350.org and Colorado Rising shows that my work at the Capitol is time to be implemented locally.
Thank you. For the next question, we'll start with candidate Crowder. And it is, do you support better laws for mobile home parks in Boulder County? And we'll do one minute for this question.
I'm a big advocate of affordable housing, and the most affordable housing is mobile home parks. I mean, you can buy a mobile home for about $24,000. You just can't find a place to put it in Boulder County. If you look at the county zoning ordinance and the zoning maps, you see three tiny little pieces of pink where mobile home parks are allowed in Boulder County. If I could wave a magic wand, I could solve the affordable housing crisis tomorrow by simply rezoning some areas so that mobile home developments could go in and people could buy houses they could live in. We don't need the government to build houses for us. We need the government to get out of the way.
Thank you. And candidate Singer?
Thank you. Now, this is a very important question, and I'm going to agree with candidate Crowder on this one. Then mobile homes are a good first step towards affordable housing. I think what we can do now is, number one, during the COVID crisis, ensure that we are not enforcing evictions on people who have lost their jobs right now. And then the next step is to actually create and sustain an affordable housing program that will invest in mobile home parks where community cooperatives can jointly own these properties. And when it comes to working with our law enforcement, and I think Sheriff Pele has done a very good job with this, is making sure that there's strong communication so unscrupulous property owners aren't using the force of law to force people out of their mobile homes right now. People deserve to own the land that's under them. It's your largest investment. And we can go a long ways here in mobile homes and in tiny homes to create a better system.
And candidate Lochemine?
Yeah, so the question about mobile homes, interestingly enough, I actually have a few mobile homes on the market right now in Boulder, in Boulder Meadows. And that is the one question that I get from people calling in and asking, like, what happens? What's the risk to me if the landowner decides to just take it from me? That's a big concern. It's a big issue. I'm also getting calls from folks who are saying, what about tiny homes? And really, it's a zoning question, just like Jim brought up. And so that is something that if we want to creatively and in a new way look at all different types of housing options, because not just one piece is going to be the solution. It's opening different doors, using vacant property around Boulder County to address this bigger affordable housing option. I agree, it shouldn't just be subsidized housing, but we do need to create some more ownership options versus just affordable rentals. And mobile homes could be one of those, but just creating that sense of this is a place where I can live and I know I'm going to be able to stay is critical for us in Boulder County.
Thank you. The next question, and let's do 90 seconds for this one as well. What is your position on use of force by law enforcement? And how would you approach this issue with the Boulder County Sheriff's Department? And to start off, we'll go with candidate Singer.
Thank you. And you know what? I don't think we would have gotten that question if it hadn't been for the people out there marching every single day for the last couple of weeks. This shows you the power that people truly have. We have a bill right now in the state legislature, and I already talked a little bit about this before because it's so important, mandatory body cams. Decarcerating our jails by investing in things like mental health over incarceration. Making sure that there is sustainable wraparound housing services for people leaving the criminal justice system so they don't have to return to the criminal justice system. And getting citizen review panels that are independent to really take a look at those hardest cases of the people that have been hurt the worst by this and get actual in, on-the-ground accountability immediately so we don't gloss these things over. You know, El Cometa was founded 40 years ago, almost to the day. They've been an amazing group in Longmont that's been able to bridge the gap between law enforcement and our community, but we're not there yet. And so my goal is really to build this out even further. And we have immense power as county commissioners here, working with our district attorney's office, working with our county sheriff's office, and working with our housing and human service system to bring these together in a global perspective to stop the bad incidences that are happening and at the same time, get real accountability for officers who are doing the wrong thing and providing the right kind of protections for the right officers who are doing the right thing today.
Candidate Lochemine, go ahead.
So the question about East of Forest, I want to, one, I think it's an important question, but I want to just respond to what candidate Singer said. That is part of the systemic issues that we have in systemic racism, institutionalized racism in this country, in this state, and in this county. When I hear you say that you think it's because of the marches that we're having that question today. And the reason why that's problematic is because we shouldn't be asking those types of questions about procedures and policies that affect people and more predominantly people of color all over our globe just because someone's out marching and protesting. That is part of the piece of, it needs to come from people who are most affected so that it's not about a specific incident. It's all day, every day, how we're looking at all of our policies and our procedures. And when we talk about the county and our, the county police department and the way that that works, is the question around what are our policies? I went and met with Sheriff Pele, and I'm hearing a lot of different practices. But the question for me is the transparency and accountability to ensure that those are actual policies that have to do with information share, that have to do with some of these incidents. We've had incidents in the city of Boulder. We made national news for really, really poor behavior. And those are pieces that we need to still address, and I will be supporting that at a county level, but not just over one incident.
Candidate Crowder?
Yeah, very hot-button issue in the moment. And my take on all of this is that our frontline responders have very, very difficult jobs. And that there are, in any organization, people who in a moment will use bad judgment, or maybe they're just bad actors. And so the role of the organization should be, we got people who are just not able or willing to use judgment. Or worse yet, truly are bad actors and hurt people. I think that it's important that we continue to try to look at each other as people and get past a lot of the identity politics that we're involved with right now and treat everybody the same. This is a nation, one nation, under law. Not laws, we're under the same law, and everybody should be treated exactly the same way under that law.
Thank you. The next question will start with candidate Lochemine. And it is, what is your position on campaign financing? And how would you be accountable to all Boulder County community members as opposed to campaign donors only? And we'll do one minute for this question.
That's an important question. I think there's a lot of conversation about campaign finance and reform and from a national level and certainly from a state level. And we've seen some great policies that we've all been involved in to make sure that we look at the way that campaigns are financed. Being on this side as a candidate, it's been shocking to see the way that money comes into politics. It's disappointing from a community advocate standpoint, from a lobby, from a teacher standpoint, about the way that this money unfortunately is used in campaigns or ballot initiatives for candidates. My concern comes from looking at other campaigns in this county locally. When we raise more funds than anyone else has for this race in other teams in this particular race, that sends out a shocking message to everyday people like myself about your interest and ability to participate in this really important practice.
Thank you. Candidate Crowder?
Well, I've yearned for years to have a magic wand that would allow me to pass a constitutional amendment that would simply say that if you're not a natural person, meaning you can't draw breath, you're not a PAC or a corporation, if you don't live in a candidate's district, if you are not legally registered for vote, to vote, then you may not make a campaign contribution of any sort. And that would stop a lot of out-of-state money flowing in here to influence elections. People that don't even live here have a point of view about what Colorado should be. I think Coloradans ought to make those determinations.
And candidate Singer?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. And I think the comments before were really mischaracterized what I was talking about. When we talk about people marching in the streets, I've always been on the forefront of police reforms, and my voting record shows that. But what's amazing is what the power of the people do. And this is what we can do with the power of the people. We could actually create a system here in Boulder County where we create a public financing system where candidates don't have to chase the biggest dollars. I took the No Fossil Fuel pledge and returned money from people in the oil and gas industry because that's not part of who I am or what my platform is. And you know what? I've received more donations from more individuals in this race than any other county candidate. I think that shows my grassroots support, but it shouldn't be about money. It should be about voters. So let's create that public financing system. Let's lead the way like Denver already has. Put that to the ballot and create a better system for everyone.
Our next question is, and we'll start with candidate Crowder. As a commissioner, As a commissioner, how would you approach relationships or partnerships with city government leaders on issues like transportation and affordable housing? And let's do 90 seconds for that one.
Well, as you've heard me say, I'm a huge advocate for affordable housing, but to me, I think I use that term differently than a lot of politicians. I'm not advocating for government to go out and build affordable housing. I'm advocating for government to get out of the way so that affordable housing can happen organically and people end up owning homes that they can afford to live in. With respect to intergovernmental agreements between Boulder County and the various municipalities and townships around here, well, of course, we have to be partners in these things, but, excuse me, I'm not going to be one to dictate what the town of Lyons should do or, or let Boulder have an oversized influence on my ideas about the rest of the county.
I gave you the wrong signal there. Yeah, you still wanted to.
Well, you know, I could go on, but that's the point. Let's get along. Let's, let's listen to each other. Let's try to use my office and my platform, if I have one, my, my podium, to talk a little bit about getting government out of the way and getting some housing problems solved.
And candidate Singer.
Thanks for bringing this up. Just a quick question, 60 or 90 seconds?
90.
Okay, well, I'll solve the world in 90 seconds, I promise. So, so, um, one of the first things I did, um, as soon as I was elected to the Colorado State House, is I actually marched down to the RTD Board of Directors and I said, it is time to build what you promised us in 2004, where I collected signatures. And it is time to use our bully pulpit on every level of government to make sure that we get what we are owed here. Because we took one for the team when we let other parts of the state use our RTD dollars to build their fast track system. The next thing that we can do is start thinking outside the box with things like RTAs to create our own transportation districts if it's not, when it doesn't work with RTD. And we can use our power of convening as county commissioners to bring Erie and Lafayette and Boulder together because I've been on Arapahoe Road at 3:30 PM to 6:30 PM on a weekday. And that crosses through several cities and we need to bring those folks together. And in terms of looking at the cross between this and affordable housing, we can incentivize inclusionary zoning near mass transit hubs. And I think inclusionary zoning needs to be a huge component of what we do in affordable housing to tell developers that this is what we want our community to look like, that we want people of all walks of life to be able to participate, be able to have access to mass transit. Some people call it alternative transit, but mass transit is sometimes the only option for people and it's our job to create those investments.
Candidate Lotrimine.
Yeah, I heard the question around, you know, city leaders and relationships to get work done. And one of the pieces that for me is really important in this particular race for District Two, from a local perspective, when we look at who are other, you know, the Board of County Commissioners, and there's only three people that make this $430 million budget allocation and then really are supporting our 2,000 Boulder County employees. And so, because I've worked for the City of Longmont a couple times in past work, because I was chosen as an All-America Cities delegate based on community work that I've been involved in, really guiding the City of Longmont a Latino, Longmont Latino Strategic Plan, which is now the Longmont Multicultural Action Plan that created and was the impetus for the Boulder County Latino Chamber, um, that got me involved in some of the Techstars work and Longmont Startup Week. I say that because those relationships are really important and will be more important now in my role as county commissioner, because I've seen upfront projects and work and partnerships and will build on those collaborations. So that, sitting in different projects, doing focus groups with Boulder County employees and city employees in different areas, to really look at where are we doing great work? Like our Neighborhood Group Leaders Association in Longmont, like Micah Holmes in Longmont, like our Veterans Village in Longmont. And bring those out from a county perspective and just share those ideas. I agree with Jim, we need to collaborate on another level. And I'm excited to bring that very local perspective to this job and the role.
Thank you. So I think we have time for one more question before, before closing statements. And the question is about voter engagement itself. What is your message to younger voters about the importance of their participation in voting and other forms of civic engagement? Uh, we'll start with candidate Singer and you'll have one minute.
This is so important, um, not just for our younger voters, but voter apathy in general. You know, one of the things that I, one of the first bills that I ran allowed 16 and 17-year-olds to pre-register to vote, so when they turn 18, they're automatically in our system. We have an automatic voter registration, um, program. We should be incentivizing our youth by, um, not just putting them on youth boards, but having youth representatives to other boards that sit with our county commission's office. We need to make sure that, um, our parents feel welcome too by ensuring that we can provide childcare for folks who participate in civics but maybe can't afford to because they need to watch their kids. There's so many different options that we have out there right now. The sky really is the limit, but this is something that I have worked on. And just this year, my hope is, is that we'll actually be allowing 16 and 17-year-olds to vote in school board races. And this is one more step in getting people more civically engaged. When you start a bad habit at a young age, it's hard to get rid of. When you start a good habit at a young age, it sticks too.
And candidate Lotrimine.
The question around voter engagement, I feel like that's a big question for every, it's like one of those million dollar questions. How could we get, you know, 100% of our voters out in all, in all races, from the top to the bottom of ballots? And for me, part of my work on a consultant standpoint is around family engagement, building three-tiered family engagement for St. Green Valley School District to bring students and families and staff and administration together to communicate, to work together, to build relationships. I've done the same thing for Community Foundation Boulder County and, and also for the City of Longmont, working on a state grant, all around community engagement, and it starts with community needs. And that means for me, as a commissioner's office, how do we start internally with Boulder County employees? And really, do we know how many of our own county employees are involved in these civic participations? How do we start opening up those conversations so that we can get to the point where voting is part of that dialogue and encourage it at another level here locally first?
And candidate Crowder.
Well, in conversations that I've had with people about voting, uh, what keeps ringing in my ears is, oh, well, we don't vote because we don't feel like our votes count. I mean, we've had one party rule in Boulder County forever, since 1994 was the last Republican elected to county commissioners. So people just, you know, why bother? Even, even Democrat voters feel like we don't really have to go to the polls because it's going to go in that direction. Well, what I do to encourage that, well, I think, you know, if we could eventually get to a direct representation for a particular precinct, I think people would turn out because now it comes home to them. I have a real voice where I live. It's not an abstract thing about liking the way this person looks or all the promises this, this other person makes.
Thank you so much. That will wrap up the question portion of the candidate forum. And now we have time for one minute closing statements. And for those closing statements, we will go in reverse ballot order. That means we'll start with candidate Crowder. Go ahead, please.
Well, I hope to have the opportunity to serve my community. I've been on this planet a long time and I've gotten to a place in my life where I think I've actually garnered a little wisdom and judgment and I'm not reactive in the way that, um, I would have been as a younger person. I tend to listen more than I talk. And, um, what I've discovered is, when I'm talking, I'm not learning. I'm only learning when I listen. So if you elect me to be your county commissioner in District Two, I promise, my door is going to be open, my phone's going to be available to you and you can count on me to listen to what you have to say.
Thank you. Candidate Lotrimine.
Uh, thank you again to Boulder County League of Women Voters for bringing us all together and for the competitors participating in the dialogue. We have a huge, um, opportunity. And we have a big decision about this particular one seat, District Two, out of the three county commissioner seats for this year. And this primary is significant. We have to make a tough decision about, are we going to elect somebody specifically in our June 30th primary that will keep us in the past? Or are we going to do a progressive, truly dynamic change to include someone from a community who is going to lead us to the future that we say that we want? And I'm proud to be a first-time candidate with donors and volunteers who have really, the majority never participated in this process. And I'm proud to be endorsed by Deb Gardner and Elise Jones and Hillary Hall and Claire Levy and many other community-based and focused local supporters.
And candidate Singer.
Thank you again, and thank you to the other candidates for taking the time to do this, um, this evening as well. You know, I, I do believe that it is time to see a new generation of politics stand up. That's why I talk about things like creating a Boulder County Green New Deal to lead the way. And when we look at our climate crisis or our COVID crisis or any of those things, I believe my experience actually flipping the system for the people, with the people that need it the most, means that this race is so critical right now to be able to do that again. I'm supported by groups like 350.org and the Sierra Club and grassroots groups like Colorado Rising, along with mayors across the front range, because I've had this progressive record of results my entire career and my entire life. I sincerely hope that everyone thinks hard about their ballot and on June 30th, I look forward to working forward with you in whatever community capacity we all can, and I look forward to doing that with my other fellow candidates as well.
Well, thank you all very much for participating tonight, not only to our candidates for their participation in tonight's forum, but for your participation in the democratic process. Running for office and serving as an elected official is hard work and we really appreciate your efforts. I want to also thank our League Candidate Forum volunteers, Joe Porter, Peggy Leach, our administrator, Mandy Nuku, and Sergio Angeles from Longmont Public Media. Gracias to our interpreter, Rosa Bell Rice. And finally, thank you to the forum audience. These are challenging times and the more reason to ensure a strong democratic process that engages as many community members as possible. Colorado has one of the most efficient and accessible voting processes in the country. Let's use it. Thank you for your participation and for encouraging your family members, your friends, your neighbors, to pay attention to these important issues affecting our community and to vote. Please check out our League voter information website, vote411.org for all your election information. This forum will be rebroadcast on Thursday, June 11 at 6:00 PM on Longmont Public Media's Channel Eight and will also appear until the election on League's YouTube channel and other links on social media. Look for more information at LWVBC.org. The League of Women Voters of Boulder County works throughout the year to help empower voters and defend democracy. If you want to lend your time and skills to encourage civic engagement for all people, no matter who you are or where you live in this community, in a nonpartisan manner, please join us. Again, all the information you need is at LWVBC.org. Thank you all very much again and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.[1775.98]